Evening ladies and gentlemen. I've got a few items of new business, some of these are just to get on the agenda for the next week. But first off, I'd like to request to surplus our dump trucks as per our budget. We had planned to surplus two of our dumps. We have two on the order that'll be ready by the time these go box or by the end of March. And also, in addition to this, the dollar figure is not ideal. Dale Wood has assured me that they feel very, they feel comfortable that this, that these trucks will go for more than what they've got listed as. Apparently, he wasn't willing to put that in writing in our guarantee. But he said he felt very comfortable that it will level with what we have on here. From my research over the last two, three options as well, June, September were about the worst that they've seen in a pretty little while. And supposedly, I guess that's due to presidential election years are always a little bit iffy leading up to that. And then in December, they bounced back. They expect March to be a good sale as well. But I'd like to get that on the agenda. Also, number two on the list, you know, do you already have your replacements done senior?
They've been in the March of the year, so we've got like two months.
What are we going to do?
The sale is the 18th, so I have about two weeks there that potentially two weeks, they said it could be seven, but probably two weeks I'll go with. We have that one dump trailer that hooks to our tractor truck. Got that and two small dumps that will run in the meantime, that couple of weeks to toddles over. If push comes to shove, that we get some kind of issue or a bind where, you know, we need dirt fast and several trucks, spare trucks follow it. Then we can contract with Stevens, they have our annual trucking contract. But hopefully, my hope is they'll be here by the time the option goes that will happen in our hands. I don't even have an update on that in the next week as well. Also provided, we discussed driveway mowing costs. So I put together the mowing cost in the bottom part of the sheet is our actual cost from safety mowing. And then a projection for full width mowing at county level. Very first item is what we project for full width mow for the contractors at his previous per mile price.
So you're pretty much the same.
Pretty close on the full width. Then in addition to that, that's not including the safety mow, because I'll have enough money set up there for him to save the mow. So we have to do that. Next, also wanted to present some information to the commission. Bridge inspection departments are changing. So the ALDOT was kind enough to provide us with some information to go along with this, to present to you all. That here if you want to read it, but basically they're changing and adding a lot of information to our inspections that the federal bridge bureau is requiring now. So over the next two years, we're tasked with updating all this information and getting it in and they're calling, this program, they're calling it CBI. But it's specifications for national bridge inventory from Federal Highway Administration. So this is going to add work basically to us, a pretty good bit of work to try to gather all this information. At least for the first, first time it's collected all these bridges. So they wanted, they gave us this information to be able to provide to the commission to explain what's happening.
What's the goal?
It's just a requirement from federal bridge or from the federal highway administration to collect more information, I guess, to make her, make them more comfortable that our bridges are, bridges are safe as we find they are or not. It's just additional information. Some of it is useful, in my opinion, and some of it is not.
No funding to that deal?
No, no, it's, it's just additional requirement. So it'll increase our workload for bridge inspections. So at least basically this next year, two years, after that it'll balance a little bit and we'll have some increase, but not a, not overwhelming increase.
Derek, I have a question for you.
Which one?
Reading this memorandum, this was adopted in 2022, we just kind of get it?
Yes, it is just now coming into enforcement. This year, the first year that the state is swapping our information over to match this. And then from here out, we have two years to collect all the information that they need and get our information updated in this bridge computer program. We submit all our data through the ALDOT. So we've got, we've got a little bit of time. We could not, until after March 2025, die for this March.
Right.
We can't even enter any information, put this new information into the computer system. So what we got, we got a little bit of time and we should, should not problem getting our information updated. We've been developing some spreadsheets to try to make that process a little faster for crews. Also bring up item number four, our traffic, traffic tracking project we've talked about. Again, for a year or so, needing to do, do some traffic tracking, catch up on some traffic. I have a few, several roads that have virtually no strike left on. And then back in October, we laid out a plan with research and I had 65,000 sets out for traffic tracking in that in October. So I've, I thought it's on the agenda to request the next meeting to request that at house reviews. That's all of the new business. So there's nothing on here that needs to be woven on or just, I guess, this meeting approved. On to current business. I have a request to advertise for parts inventory control specialists. We have Ms. Pat retiring, so she's retiring in March. So at this time though, I need to see if I can't get someone to fill her position. It's, it's a position that we battle back and forth of is there a way for us to, to combine this work, her work with some of the others? I still feel like we can, can keep up with everything. That position is a little bit too specialized for our other admins to take on what she does. They don't really know anything about parts. So it's a little bit more than I think we need to rebuild that position. So I'd like to advertise for that. Also, item number four in current business, we opened our, they were right away chemical turf and brush spray. Bids IBM Solutions was the, the love bidder. And that's the same company that's done it for the last three years, I know, or maybe longer than that. They were the love bidder and the bids were the same as they were for last year or a previous term. So there's no increase. So we'd like to recommend the word for this to IBM Solutions.
So Derek, on this one, this is probably short of garbage here recently. This program is probably number one thing we get questions in the community about. Would you, I know you've done this a lot, but we're, sometimes it's hard for us to remember. Can you put us a memo together of kind of when we spray, how we spray, what we spray, and what goal the program is? You know, pre-emergent to do this, this is the goal. It doesn't have to be a dissertation, just a memo so everybody gets an understanding. Because if you haven't been asked yet, you will be asked why we spray the right way to kill all the grass and. It, it helps us to brush up, this is about the other time of year.
Yes, I can get that to you probably about every week.
Yeah, in the next couple of weeks.
We'll, we'll be out of town Tuesday, Wednesday, so Kyle will be out of town. Next thing on my list, mud grader. Came to you recently. We've been in this discussion for some little while. So I've put together all the information that I have on mud grader, where I'm at. Want to see. The first thing, we've got quotes from Caterpillar, John Deere, Kamatsu. And those are listed here on the very next page in my agenda package. You'll see base price upfront for all three, the very top one for each one is the base price that's without a mud grader or without a ripper on that. Next price down is that price plus the ripper for each one of those machines. Then we've got the warranty information, third line down, and then availability below that. I've got some additional information I want to bring up on warranty for Caterpillar. Below that, you'll see the options here where I've got them outlined, the differences in purchase price from option one to option two. What the difference is between the base prices. And then same thing, the next one down is the difference of that same mud grader for each of those brands with a ripper versus Caterpillar price. So with that being said, on the next page, I brought forth, we've got information on, from a company called Rouse Equipment Insights. This company provides resale values, retail and option resale values. You know, from, from data that they collect on these machines. And in here, we've kind of got. And in here, we've kind of got all three of our options here. We did the same version in a 2020 as what we have now. The Caterpillar, now these are with rippers, we don't have one with a ripper or two without, so, but we're just saying, hey, if they all have rippers, these are the differences in estimated option resale values. We talked with our chief supervisor too, my equipment supervisor, and he said that they do seem realistic to him, that it seems, you know, very likely that this is, is pretty accurate on resale value. So this is significant difference as you go down the list here. I think there's 45,000 difference in resale between the 2020 Cat 140 and John Deere 670 GP. Same thing, about $75,000 difference between the Cat 140 and the Komatsu GD 655. And then about $30,000 between the John Deere and the Komatsu in resale values. These don't sell the whole picture necessarily. With Caterpillar, you've got, you know, at least 26, 27,000 dollar difference between the Komatsu and the base with the rear river on Caterpillar. Resale value is, is pretty expensive, you know, so we got 26, 27,000 versus 74,000. It doesn't paint the whole picture, but we went through the last four years of the machines we've got, only had a one-year full warranty and a four-year powertrain warranty. So we've had some expenses, probably 20, 25,000 dollars in expenses over the last four years on the Caterpillar graders that we've got. So that adds to resale value, obviously, the difference in resale values, our value and expenses in front. Caterpillar, or Thompson Caterpillar has offered, if we buy three cat graders, that they will upgrade your warranty to a premier warranty. It took over five years, same as the Komatsu from Indiana. So instead of just powertrain for the remaining four years, it's a full warranty for all five years, which would match a big standard. That would match the Komatsu, the Komatsu one, which is a pretty good, pretty good deal for me. That's a big expense that we've had, it's been a big, I'd say it's been an issue that we had, really probably one of the only issues we've had with the Caterpillar graders. So with that being said, I would like to request to purchase two Caterpillar graders with the ripper and one at a base price without a ripper for a total of three. But I would, the values seem to set up well that the Caterpillar right now is our best value for what we, what we're going to put into it, for what we use.
So how do we fund that?
That, um, the next question I had would, it was brought up maybe to be able to get the remainder, if we could get 250,000 out of, reduce the emergency grant price and lodging tax down to 150,000. I estimate that should be around $420,000 by the end of September, should be what's in that account. That may, you know, plus or minus a thousand or so dollars depending on how the months go. But my calculations based off of data this year so far and last year's information, we have about 424,000 left in that by the end of the year. After we have taken out the 225 for the road park and 30,000 for the red guy.
Yeah, the, um, so the balance in that fund is not about 260,000 dollars right now?
Yeah, should be about, yeah, I got about.
So we don't, we don't collect that much in?
About 20,000 a month on Brooklyn. Yeah, I've, yeah, it should be somewhere around 280. I don't know, do you?
280.
Yeah, I think we, we've done that. We've been there a long, we do that.
Yeah, like 420, 425, probably in September, August.
So do you have, so y'all worked out the financing, I mean not the financing, but the, the proposal, what you're gonna, what you're gonna need to?
Yeah, well, Mr. Jimmy and I, we've talked a pretty good bit about this. And the, if we could reduce, if y'all wanted to, and to reduce that fund to like 150,000, that would give anywhere between 250 to 270,000 dollars out of that fund in September, not now.
Yeah, and that's what I'm saying, well, we're probably going to have to see Derek to be able to, to be able to move on this is our, all this, you and Mackenzie agreeing with the memo laid out, how we're going to fund the entire thing. Just the, you know, if, if the proposal is that, then show that. But if I remember right, and I'm looking at your note at the bottom, so I'm assuming our payment now is, we're making the, we're debt servicing what we have now for about 110,000 dollars.
Yeah, 180 and change.
That's our, that's our payment on the heavy tractor's annual.
Uh, three.
280, carry on three trucks today. And they're all three things we pay for or paid for and that.
Yeah, should, should be in April, all three are paid for in April. And so I guess what you're talking about, make sure I'm right on this, is option two on the first page. And with a down payment of about 200,000, get your annual payments to around the same as that. Yeah, op, option one up here all the way to the right would be the surplus value of the machines of 260,000 plus 267,000. And I've got another item to bring up, and I guess I need to bring this up to Mackenzie.
Go back to it once you just said it about option one. Who's over here looking at it?
On the purchase two with rippers, one without.
One hundred and fifty.
It's with the.
It's on each right here. These, got you.
Which one matches this?
One, two, one. Okay, okay.
The, so if we, our surplus value of 260, what we expect out of those machines right now, and I need 277,000 in addition to that to get our payments to 19866.
So, um, so at the end of this, we'd end up with four graders?
Yes.
So. On option two on the first page, which is sale three and buy two with a ripper and one without, correct? That's what you're looking at?
No, these on option one.
Option one.
Yeah, that's what I'm telling you. We, so the, with about, I mean, I like the analysis. So I think it's kind of hard for us to figure, there's a lot of options with, if this one do that and a different down payments.
Yeah.
We really need to see, here's what I want to do, and here's how I'm available.
Okay.
Which?
And give him.
So this one right here is the one we're talking about.
Yeah. How much energy?
Sorry, eyeballed it out.
It's, it's this one or two.
So right, let's figure without a.
That's where I was thinking about what I was looking at.
We got four and three?
Got three.
Three with equal. And buy three?
Yes. I'd like to increase our fleet. I have three active graders on dirt roads and one backup and to be sure of what we do on paved roads.
I mean Derek, and I'm just curious, if we're sitting here trying to figure out how to live in a budget, I would, and I'll make the time that comes and ask you, oh, this week, I would be curious if you kept two of the tractors, then what would we look like? If you kept two of the tractors you got and we just, we all do more? You know, one with a ripper and one without? I mean, I'd like to, I didn't think it's my best way out some options of what we can do to get four tractors and have two good new ones that can potentially get the fact that's having to pull money from somewhere else in the budget to try to make it work. If we could have more tractors.
That would lead for an option two, wouldn't it?
That you add four? The, yeah, we get down to option three, all the way to the bottom, I've got sale two by two. You know, so sale two, buy two, with just selling the two and buying two more, our payments would be about 98,000 dollars a year.
And that'd put us about, that'd put us within the budget for a year.
The, well, with sale two, buy two, I guess we'll still just have three, without three mud graders.
Going back to the, what, Derek, I'm just.
But we hadn't done an analysis of keeping two of them.
Yeah, just selling one and buy two? I haven't yet. It'd be close to option three, but I could reduce one down here.
So. Yeah, I don't, I mean, again, I think we have, I want to speak to everybody personally. I like the idea of a full half month. It's a dirty. Uh, it doesn't give me cause, our, our budget is tighter. We, we've given the road department pretty much everything out of that fund up until certain point for the last couple of years. I'm not saying we don't want to do exactly what you're asking for, I just, and, and anybody that wants to add to this, please do, but do work out, I mean, when you come back to this, I mean, you can flood it or not, first of all, I just ask you questions. But once, once you've got your mind made up of this, or if you say, look, I want option one, if I can't have it, here's what I can settle for. And present us those two options as what you want, that'll give us time to get you and the kids time to get that fund together and put us together a fund balance, because we, we do have a couple of other emergency things going on, but that is our own.
And that doesn't, I agree, we, that does not scare me as much though, is that, here's what scares me, it's not government to it once, it's in four years we're going to go back to it. I mean, at some point, we've got to figure out how to maneuver within our budget to reach our goal, from we got to figure out how many for its funding, but it doesn't need to be every four or five years hammering that emergency fund. Because every year we have a huge flood, the Schelwander Bridge collapses, and we got, we use the emergency fund for, you want to say, I mean, something like that, and then later the year we need, we needed to make, make a plan for this, when it comes to book and trade down. But I agree, we need another, another motivator. Having, so right now with the three, are we running two full time? We're running two with neither of the dirt roads and the other's been doing shoulder work, right?
One of them has been pulled quite a lot for shoulder work. They're both, or all three are supposed to have a zone that they run in, but for shoulder work, we don't have anything else to pull to do that work with. The motivator is just our best, best option. So we pull one quite often to do repairs for shoulder work, base value repairs. Building on 1170 right now, we had to have a motivator on, so.
Do we get any rug out though, it's going to change your year, Derek, how many hours you go on a tractor per year doing that work versus motivator work? How much you pull that as one?
Really don't have an idea for sure. It'd be difficult for me to pull that because we kind of swap them out tractor to tractor. But I can see what I can find.
Man, I'm not trying to work here, I'm just making a comment, just, just asking questions like, are we doing a smaller amount of shoulder work, base value work than a older tractor that lasts a couple of years doing that? Where when we've had a six inch snow and a two inch rain, we need good brand new tractors rolling down these dirt roads, keeping rocks happy.
Yeah, and when it comes to our shoulder work, I mean, we're looking at probably 40% of the amount of time with our other graders running on the, on the dirt road. Yeah, I mean, they're, they're, this usually lasts. I mean, we definitely don't need a new machine doing shoulder work. You know, that was the hope that that fourth machine was just going to be a backup and shoulder work machine.
Yeah, I'm not saying this is the right line, Stan, I'm just asking questions. If 30 to 40,000 dollars a year in paint, rug, and furniture, these tractors, if we got paid for, you could build them up in a tractor. You don't want to try, and we're, we're not necessarily. And we, we offer to the degree that we've done allocate that, you know, you're paying on new tractors, so if you had a breakdown that big, we got to pull that or somewhere. But you said what I'm saying, I mean, it's.
Okay, so you, you know what, what we've got to add, anything else on this that we have discussed? What else have you got for us, Derek?
The only other thing I've got is, I don't know, page. Item number six under current, I brought forth the complete application. I know we discussed this, I can't remember if it was last meeting or the one before, but they, I wanted to bring this information to you so that maybe, and by the time we get together at the next meeting, that Commissioner Johnson and I have been looking over these bridges. And we've got a, a list of what we think kind of might fall within this realm. But the maximum amount of this grant is 400 dollars, but it's a match grant. So in order to get the full 400,000 dollar amount, you've got to contribute 400 dollars as well to get it there. Bridge grants are few and far between. They're, we don't find a lot of money available grant wise for building bridges and such. They don't come around very often. So I would like to apply for this grant if we find out a bridge, but if we do, we're looking, you know, most of our bridges that fit within this realm are probably only close to the 400,000 dollar match required. I mean, probably close to 800,000, 900,000 dollar bridges that fit within this realm and kind of fit the bill of what they're asking, what they're looking for for logging efficiency.
So what the grant is offering, through the forest industry, forest commission, association works, some grants I would consume throughout, is that?
No, I think it's coming straight from the engineer, from the forest commission.
They'll, they'll, they will private industry in our county to sign a letter to the engineer that because of a circumbridges inadequacies that it had a detrimental, you know, cost, you see what I'm saying, to have to go around if they do or, so I've been working with him trying to figure out what is, there, there are several that do that, some for some and others, but we're trying to pick one that is feasible for our budget too. So that's going to be something else we'll need to set, how to figure out if he's going to work on how we get some of these bad bridges off our list and schedule them.
Anything else, Derek? Anything, anything else that the commissioner's got? Big questions? Well, if you don't mind, is it something we can wait? Could we get 28 minutes to get through, I guess, the rest of the name thing? Is that okay? All right. Mr. Herb is not here, I called Mr. Herb today. A couple, a couple of takeaways. He, he is going to, he's fine managing the radio for the voluntary fire department stuff for us and, and kind of have ownership of those and track them towards, and really it's the registering, the serial numbers. And I have that purchase order in quote two. So the other thing he brought up is in April, late March, but more likely April, April, he's going to try to do a weather drill. It's something he said they've done before, but it's really for schools, they go through the schools, but it's a be prepared, be ready day type drill. The shelters during the recent federal funding halt, that, those funds were stopped, but they've been reinstated. And so he said, he's still waiting on more information, but we're, everything's still open. And then the last thing that I know he was working on for us, that I got that down, was the radios that Troy University is going to donate to the commission so that we could then either use or sell them good deals to help the volunteer fire association out with the radios. He said they're waiting on the last couple of approvals, but that was floating at the change. He was going to try to get advantage before before the meeting, but he didn't.
And that's actually the source of cost, they're not.
That's, I'm not 100% sure of that, but I don't know that he knows anybody's put their hands on it, just what Herb has said. So, yes, the expectations that all of those have to do with surplus. Mr. Allen?
Um, do you want me to wait for you?
We can, we can talk about it when we get to the bottom, but I do, I did ask Mr. Allen today about another executive session, just to get everybody. We'll give a general update in the main meeting, but then an executive session to go into a little more details, some names on the judicial complex. Commission report.
The county association contacted me today and asked, we asked our executive officials that have surplus equipment to use their option in April. Keep that in mind, guys.
Yeah, we used to have some stuff.
We used to do, I can't remember when they would have it there, so. But Derek, there might be a way for you to get that one thing out there.
All right, so as y'all can see, the administrator and Jordan, they're, they're both out. So I told them I handled the administrator report. We don't have anything new, or she didn't send me anything new, unless y'all have. I did bring Brayden in, that's what I was trying to hurry, so she would make her stay for the meeting, give us the garbage update, because I'm sure there'll be a lot of conversation around that. So I'll run down through this pretty quickly, and then we can address everything a little more detailed in the meeting. Really, the only thing on here other than the judicial complex, and we'll save that for the main meeting, is the personnel commission office. You should have a memo that the interviews were done last week and the recommendation for the job that we approved in the budget for the facilities manager position. She has a recommendation. That, that's going to be a big step for us in trying to tackle some of the deal of now. And he can start in, in early March. So that, that'd be a big thing too. So I will ask when we get to that, that on the agenda that we approved is, is higher. Any questions on that? Okay. Well, I did ask Mr. Brayden if she would stay tonight and give us an update on two things, if you want to come up. One, kind of an update on the call volume for garbage that we've been getting. And then two, she's been doing some research for some options that, you know, for us to be able to look at as a commission to see if there's other, you know, if we continue to have issues, what other options we have, so. Take it away.
So last Monday, I got the most calls, obviously, if they don't probably get it. And it was in like the fifty-five area up around Highway twenty-nine, out on Forest Banks. And so I had to call it all, of course, and he kept reassuring me that they were going to get it that day. But they did not get it that day, but it was the next morning after I ended up calling Mr. June Free Shows. I had to call him, and he told me that whatever problems that we had, to bring them to him, and he would make sure that Donald got them done. By the end of the next day, all of those problems were resolved. But over the course of the rest of the week, I received calls that, and it was all over the county, these were, that they were not getting trash cans. Every time they called the office for a trash can, they'd say, oh, it's going to be three or four weeks to get a trash can. And people, like all the county, are like, I can't go three to four weeks without a trash can. You know, what do I do with my trash? And so I sent Donald a list Friday. I emailed it to him and texted it to him so that I knew he had it of the people that needed a trash can. And he told me that he would do it today, so I planned to call him first thing in the morning to make sure that he is handling the people getting the trash can. As far as today, I only had two, and it was concerning the exemptions where they got the deal and they paid it because they were scared they weren't going to pick up their trash. And then when they got my letter, they were wanting to know if they could get a refund. And so I ended up contacting Cal about that, and he told me that he had already processed a few refunds. And I sent him those two people, and he said he would take care of it. So as far as calls, we're pretty much getting caught up except for the trash can issue.
So you're, you're logging all of this in such a way that we can, we can go on reports of, you know, call volume? We can, we can do those in areas?
Yes, I have it organized by county right number, so that way when you print the report, it's.
And, and that's why I encourage everybody, like, even if you deal with it yourself, to let it know. So the next time we have, we have a lot of anecdotal information on this one, because we get a lot of calls to sit on it. But when we, when we sit down with them again, it won't be that I got twelve calls, it'll be, here is the call volume we had, here's when we had it, here's what the problems were. It seemed to be bad on this side of county, I don't know what happened on this side of county, we can have a little more information there. To, to be a little, a little stronger in our. But, you know, in dealing with, with really.
The last meeting they came, the first meeting they came, was really, will we not ensure the scarcity of replacement can issues fixed? I don't want to have a meeting that can make the medical best one again.
No, dude, when I got a call that I can't get a can for, I, I, that's why I don't want to cooperate anymore.
We, we were told specifically that they had gotten a bunch of cans from a, a contract that they did not renew. That those were being brought over washed, and that they had, they had special thrues that were down for, for, I think he said the next two weekends, trying to, weeks.
What we, well, Monday, in the state of that district, the commissioner available is the drivers in your district.
You're going to go to your Maggie?
The driver, if you don't have a problem.
I don't have a problem. Wow. Those are worlds.
And, and I did, I did find out one other thing, that Meridian had no bid, another contract that was close to us and brought that truck in the bike camp. So suppose we had a truck. So, and this is something I talked to you about, we're probably to ask, I've been told too, that they've got some of the, the trucks that have arms that dump the cans themselves. And then some of the people are being asked to take the can across the road.
Yes, on sixty-six fourteen especially, there's, and I know their name because they call me a lot. His last name is Watson, I don't know his first name. But he, he, he calls me a lot, and they asked him to take the can.
That's another thing that we were told in that meeting is that they would have to run the roads, but.
In some of these people, we're not able to cross the road. I buy the tractors or, you know.
Or age.
Or age, and then there's a slope, some of them that I talked to, there's a slope, you can't explain it. Not shoulder, not shoulder.
So if you follow up on that, of course, just, just.
One of the comments was people, like, they were skipping, and what they've got to turn it, because that's the other road.
So if you'll follow up on that, just get us a, are y'all officially asking this, and if so, where and why? Because we were told that, that we wouldn't. And then give us, which we got a little bit more time. So give us some, the other thing that you've been looking at for us is options and some of the things we have to do to open up other options. So talk to us a little about that.
Yes, so I've been looking at it for a couple of weeks, and I actually popped out today. When you look at our contract that was with Arrow but is now Meridian, it states in the renewal that it's an auto renewal every three years. But you can only like cancel it like a hundred and twenty days prior in written notice. And I cannot find when it was awfully renewed last. But that is probably going to be an issue unless we can find the actual date that it was automatically renewed. But one thing that I also looked at was counties around us and who they're contracted with and kind of like what they implement as far as trash pickup. And a lot of counties either do their own trash pickup, which we have done before, or they contract with a different company, which is actually Meridian, like Olkoga County, Elmore County, Lee County, Crenshaw, Covington. They all have the contract with Arrow, which is now Meridian, and it states it in their contract. Some other companies that, that was brought to my attention that not would do residential pickup could be Waste Management. They pick up residential, you know, up above like Prattville and Tuscaloosa area. So does Am Waste, what about them? And then a guy from Dofen came last week and brought his car. His company name is Martin Environmental Services. They are actually locally owned by someone in Dofen, I say. But he just came by and said that he had heard of our problems and wanted to get his car. So I did look at him and what they offer. Dale County, I didn't know, they use NDI out of, so that's another option as well. But obviously, we have to like open to rebid to learn anything else about the companies.
So Waste Management, NDI, and I don't know the rest of them require you to do your own bidding. So that, that's one of the things that we're also researching is, I mean, obviously, Pike County's done that before, there's, there's a lot of questions in it. But we're, what hopefully we'll come to the commission with when Brayden finishes her results. Are other options and things that we have to do to be able to do this? We obviously can rebid and, and see who bids on it and open it up and have a stronger contract. Some of our strength is going to come through us being in charge of the, the financial piece of it. And so we just need to be able to educate ourselves and weigh that out. So, lot to, lot to digest. So if there's specifics, what Brayden's doing is kind of researching for us, if there's specifics that you guys want to see, y'all be sure to let me know.
Because you've talked to some of the surrounding counties that use another company, hire that building?
So, NDI, of course, those are, they're county, they do their own building, so NDI does not build. As far as like the waste.
Do they do, do some, out of the commission office or the revenue commission?
Yes, so Dale County does it through the commission office. It's a separate like department though, like we saw, they call it their solid waste department. And they have an enforcer. I did actually post in the ACCA, you may can like contact people that work in other counties through there, and ask if there were counties that did their own billing and, you know, how did they feel about that? Did they have an enforcement officer, did they bill it through something else? And one of the counties said that they bill through their light electrical department for the county. But she said that if they won't do it, like they have a certain area that is not in that electrical group, that they have to bill for theirself. And she said that they have a hard time collecting fees in that area. And so that if you were going to do your own billing, you would have to have an enforcement officer because they have a hard time collecting fees.
And I, I mean, I think that's part of what happened with us before.
Yeah.
Okay. All right. Anything else for Brayden?
Thanks for telling the, so she lives out. That was very good, I mean, because that was a lot of talk.
All right. Well, with that, thank you, we'll adjourn. I'm sorry, I missed my clock in the time, we have to fill up my garbage and run it over. So you want to take five minute recess? All right, let's take a five minute recess, and we'll be back at six eleven.